If I start to wander just off or something. Boy. Just give me a nudge. Oh. That won't stop him. Okay, Tess.
Yeah. There's some figuring.
Yeah.
Derek's a good guy. I was actually trying to recruit him out of college to come and work with us. But he's dropped that path right now.
Good evening. I will call the meeting to order. This is the Thursday, March 28th meeting of the Stearns County Planning Commission. We'll take a quick roll call. District one, Jason Wienerman, sorry. District two, Dave Bentroot. District three, Justin Krone.
Here.
District four is me, Sean Blackburn. I'm also operating as chair today. District five is Jacob is not with us, correct? Okay. At large, Rich Blankish.
Here.
At large, Tara Ostendorf.
Here.
And our ex officio, Joe Persky. All right, please rise and join us with the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here this evening. We start off this evening with agenda item number one. Looks like we have an attendant applicant. If you would please come up here. Agenda item number one is to consider a request for a conditional use permit submitted by Thomas and Anita Dobmeier of Albany, Minnesota, according to the requirements of sections 4.4, 4.6, 4.8, 4.14, 6.9, and 9.3 of the Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance 439, to expand an existing animal feedlot facility within 300 feet of a lake classified as shoreland. The expansion will consist of a 48 by 168 heifer barn, 36 by 60 calf barn, 50 by 50 permanent manure stockpile, and an increase to 249 AUs consisting of dairy animals and horses. The feedlot is located at 31367 Mapleview Road in Albany, zip code 56307, in the east half of the southeast quarter of Government Lot 3 in Section 3 of Farming Township. And for review of the item, please.
Could I also get confirmation of everybody that visited the site?
Certainly, sure. Sorry. Let's take a quick roll of members who visited the site. Jason Wienerman.
I did.
Dave Bentroot.
I did not.
Jason Krone.
Yes.
I did. Jake's not here. Rich Blankish.
Oh, he did.
Tara Ostendorf.
Yes.
And Joe Persky.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. So Dobmeier's feedlot has been a registered feedlot with the county and state since July 20th, 1999. It was originally registered for 101 animal units, 101.6, and it is currently registered for 179.5. The proposed increase would consist of 60 dairy heifers, 20 dairy calves, 120 dairy cows over 1,000 pounds, 30 dairy cows under 1,000 pounds. Sorry, I had that backwards. 120 dairy cows over 1,000 pounds and 30 dairy cows under. And then five horses for a total of 249 animal units. Facility was inspected on January 29th, 2024, and was determined by staff to be compliant with Stearns County Ordinance 439 and the Minnesota Rule Chapter 7020 for water quality discharge standards. The feedlot was originally noncompliant with Minnesota Rule Chapter 7020 for manure record-keeping being incomplete. All it was missing was some crop rotation history. I got that from the owners, though, fairly soon afterwards. So they have returned to compliance for record-keeping. The joint county and state feedlot permit application was received on January 29th, 2024. A CUP was previously issued on May 23rd, 2017, for a shoreland expansion. They are compliant with all the conditions that were placed on that permit as well, which included maintaining compliance with Minnesota Rule Chapter 7020 and Stearns County 439, and then also constructing the expansion to the specifications of the permit. The current facility has total and partial confinement barns, open lots, and a liquid manure storage area. The subsurface sewage treatment system certification was received on July 10th, 2021. It will be valid for three years, so it will expire this summer, but it's current as of now. There are no valid complaints on file for the feedlot. Lake Henry, which is the shoreland lake that the feedlot is located in, is a natural environment lake and is not listed on the impaired waters list for the DNR. The surrounding adjoining properties in Stearns County are zoned Ag 40 and Residential 10. There are 68 residences and 10 existing registered feedlots located within one mile of this feedlot. The nearest residence to the property is located about 748 feet to the north. Access to the feedlot is via Mapleview Road. And then an environmental assessment worksheet, an environmental impact statement, state disposal system, and a feedlot national pollutant discharge elimination system permit are not required for this facility. So they don't require any extra permitting other than this.
All right, thank you. Now, the applicants are here. Would you please introduce yourselves, your name and addresses?
My name's Austin Dunmeier. I'm Tom and Anita's son.
My name is Kylie Dunmeier. I am Austin's wife, so a daughter-in-law to Tom and Anita.
All righty, thank you. Is there anything you want to add to the discussion at this point?
Just that with the manure records, we have our co-op do them, and so that's why we just didn't have them on file, and we got them and then we returned them to her.
All righty. Commission members, anyone have any questions at this point?
Mr. Chair, just one question, and it really doesn't impact this decision at all, but just out of curiosity, I was looking in the minutes from our feedlot review committee, and there was a note about becoming ag water quality certified. Is that...what's all entailed in that? And that maybe is a question as much for staff as anything.
Right. So to become ag water quality certified, you have to work with the Soil and Water Conservation District. You work on your manure records, your cover cropping, a whole list of things. A lot of it has to do with your field applications and your cropping. So it was a suggestion that that Soil and Water District makes to most feedlots. It's just something that they brought up.
Well, and I was just trying to get ahead of this. Is this something that's a recommendation, or is this also something we're going to be seeing all the time as part of a requirement? And I wasn't sure what the impact was for you.
I am getting new to it, still being new to the farm, but we do already do cover crops and everything like that, so we just never got certified.
Perfect. All good. Like I said, it doesn't necessarily have bearing on this, but thank you.
Anyone else? Questions, comments, further discussion? It is open to the public. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak, please come forward. Please come to the podium and introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm...
It's on.
Thank you.
We're your neighbors across the lake. Hi, I'm Dean Langley.
My name is Leah Langley, and our address is 31162 Sand Lake Road, Albany. And I'll start, if that's okay. Should I put this down here? Okay. We're thankful to have lived on Lake Henry for approximately 30 years. And looking at the location on this map, we are right across from the Dobmeiers.
Straight west.
Yep. And also, kind of looking at this map, we own roughly a 16th of the shoreline on Lake Henry, and Dobmeiers own about a half of the lake shoreline. Over the years, our family has enjoyed canoeing, kayaking, and skiing on the lake, and over the 30 years, at times, we've noticed the quality of the lake's water going down, and to the point where by summer's end, it's so green, we avoid going out on it. One time while skiing on the lake, I noticed a streak of black snow and ice coming from the opposite shoreline on their side of the lake. So we have concerns.
Yeah, we're all in favor of your business success, but we're concerned about what's the inflow from the east side of Mapleview Road. There's a culvert there, and maybe somebody knows. Is that the source of water for the lake? Is it coming from right where your feedlot will be? I'm not sure. But anyway, those are our concerns. You know, we just...the lake struggles, I think, already, and so if there's more agricultural input, we expect it would get worse. And so we're curious why some of the goals were not checked off in the plan that had to do with natural resources. Many of those are just left blank, and so that's why we came to find out what we could.
Is there anybody have an answer for the water question?
As far as the water quality of the lake, that could be many factors. It could be the feedlot itself. It could be the general climate of the lake. I remember talking on the phone, I believe, with Ms. Langley, and there is no history of testing on Lake Henry for water quality. So it's something that I suggested that if they were interested to become citizen monitors for the lake itself. It's not on the DNR's impaired waters list, so I have no history of whether the water quality has decreased over the years or not.
Mr. Chair, just a little perspective on that. Back to the point by staff, there's so many factors that impact water quality in lakes in general. In Stearns County, especially that part of the state, there is so much water coming through ag fields that it's easy to point out a farm and a feedlot, but the amount of nutrients that go through farm fields, and then when we get big rains and things like that, they just tend to accumulate over time. It's a pretty natural process for a lot of the lakes around here. And honestly, even we'll get green LG blooms in Canadian lakes just due to the nature of those lakes. There's no egg around it. There's a lot of factors. This site, though, from what I was looking at, the proposal to add onto the barn actually should improve things because it takes some of the feedlot away, and it'll return it to pasture, that area that's outlined in the red. And correct me if I'm wrong in my understanding of that, but we would actually have less cattle in, let's call it, concentrated feed area, because more of that would be contained inside a building.
That's essentially yes. The animals are, instead of being on an open lot outside, they're going to be in a barn.
Less prone then to runoff in the future. So if anything, it should, this proposal should help.
So is it normal just to skip those things that refer to the water quality?
Yeah, we're usually looking at the things that apply within the comprehensive plan. And if there was documentation that, you know, there was a study that this was going to actually improve it, well, then you could cite those resources. But in this case, it's not really applicable. We're looking at the feedlot itself, so...but good questions and good concerns.
And it would be certainly something we would be far more concerned about if it were closer to the water itself, and if it presented an obvious threat.
Yeah. Oh, definitely. So to the chair's point, if this was something where it would be, in our viewpoint and experience, making it worse, yeah, then we would cite those water quality issues as reasons for not supporting something like that. But this, again, should be improving it. We could probably have cited it, and that's subjective. You can look through all these comprehensive plan goals and look at what are the things that seem like they would apply or not. But the fact that they're not checked wouldn't necessarily indicate that something's getting worse.
Okay. Thank you for your concerns and questions.
Thank you.
Sure, you can respond.
I'm not aware of anything you guys experienced or anything like that, but if I would have known, I would, you know, we always make sure that, you know, the cow yard's flowing properly and all the runoff is contained. And, you know, if you guys would have reached out, I would have been more than happy to make sure that, you know, because I know there was a rear bird last fall and stuff like that. And, you know, we're all for the environment, and that's part of the reason why we want to contain our cattle, to further improve our environmental stewardship that way.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I did see a note about a manure management plan.
Yep.
We're going to work on that as well.
I have from the last previous four years here tonight, and I also have this spring's plan two applicator.
All right, all right.
Mr. Chair, I have a comment. The comment that they have from the Soil and Water on the draft, and it's from the Feedlot Review Committee for the Ag Water Quality Certification Program. I was just going to clarify for Jason that that program is a whole farm planning program, and then it offers some additional cost share for BMPs that you can do to improve water quality issues in the future if you have, if you find concerns or areas that could be improved. So I think that's why the recommendation is there. It is a voluntary program, and so there isn't anything that this planning commission is going to do to say it's a requirement or anything like that. But just a clarification on that for if you're interested in it. My farm's water quality certified, so.
Thank you, Tara.
Thanks, Tara, yeah.
All right. Do we have some correspondence at all, or any other public input?
I did not receive any other correspondence other than the conversation with Ms. Langley.
Okay, I'll expect a motion then.
So I'm moved to close public hearing.
All second. Nope, go ahead, Rich.
I have a motion from Jason and a second from Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, one question outside the, after the public hearing. So on the map here, unit number six is the open lot that you're going to eliminate, which I assume you're going to remove livestock from the area. Are you going to do any restoration to that?
Yes, we plan on putting native grasses back in the area, and it'll, we kind of, it's a pasture area now, so we plan on returning it to pasture with low traffic area, just to keep it grazed down.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion? Well, we will go to the findings of facts then. Is the proposal consistent with the Stearns County Zoning Ordinance 439? Please specify all performance standards that apply.
Mr. Chair, it is consistent with the zoning ordinance 439, and the sections are 4.4, 4.6, 4.8, 4.14, 6.9, and 9.3.
Thank you, Rich. Is there an environmental assessment worksheet or impact statement, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, State Disposal System, or other permit required for this facility?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, I do not believe there is.
Thank you, Jason. Does the proposal conform to the goals and objectives of the county's comprehensive land use plan? Please specify the appropriate sections.
Mr. Chair, I believe it does. It applies to a bunch of agricultural goals. But I'm actually going to cite one, per the public comment, because there's a variety of ag goals that clearly meets. But I think it is a good call-up because this is dealing with the water side, is to look at our nature goals and water resource policies. And the one that I like is, you know, there's a variety of them that we could pick, but let's go with recognize the relationship between land use and water quality and continue to support water quality improvements through land use plans and regulations. And there's manure management plans that apply to these properties. We also, I mean, in this case, it's clearly creating more buffer between the building and removing an open feedlot area. So to me, it applies to some of those nature goals as well.
Thank you, Jason. Will the site configuration, number, and type of animals at this site and prevailing wind conditions impact any of the following areas: traffic, public safety, schools and parks, churches, anything else?
Mr. Chair, should improve it, actually. It should help with the smells and all of those things that...
I agree. Thank you. Has information been provided regarding the impact of property values in the area as a result of the proposal?
How comments have been received regarding that?
Thank you. Have all the recommendations from the Feedlot Review Committee and Feedlot staff been reviewed?
Mr. Chair, they have, and they're part of our review packet.
Thank you, Jason. Do we have any other issues pertinent to this matter? If not, I'll expect a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a recommendation to approve this request, and there were two conditions, so we'd include the two conditions recommended.
Thank you, Jason.
Mr. Chair, Rich Blankish, I will approve, second that for him.
I have a motion from Jason and a second from Rich. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? None? Motion carries.
Good luck.
April 16th? Is that right? Thank you. All right. Agenda item number two is to consider a conditional use permit requested, admitted by, let me get it right, Macarthur Properties LLC of Kimball, Minnesota, according to sections 4.8 and 9.10.5 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance 439. The request is to continue to operate a trucking business on a property located in part of the southeast quarter of Section 26, lying east of State Highway 15 and north of 150th Street in Mayberry Township. The property address is 8566 150th Street in Kimball, Minnesota. Staff, review the item, please.
Okay, so this property, they're looking to add Macarthur Trucking to the business out here. They did get conditional use permits back in 2011 and 2013 for an excavating business and then a motor vehicle repair business out there. So we discovered that the trucking operation is now taking place out there too. It's Macarthur Trucking and Excavating. When they applied for a permit to rebuild their shop, there was a fire in the shop, so that's when we realized that this was going on. So they need the conditional use permit now to be in compliance with everything. Property is owned commercial. There's no wetland impacts with the request. The stormwater management plan was implemented and is still functioning out there. No concerns with the septic. The property is on Highway 15, but their main access is from 150th Street, which is a township road. Property's 35 acres in size. Structure meets all the required setbacks. The outdoor storage areas are going to be to the east of the building and then within the gravel pit. There are a couple berms that were constructed several years ago on the north and south side of the buildings to help with screening the property. The planning commission tonight can determine if that's still sufficient or if more screening needs to happen. There's adequate room for parking. Signs meet the requirements. There's 29 homes and three feedlots within a half mile of the property. Other surrounding zoning is agriculture 40, agriculture 80, residential 10. Proposed conditions for this permit, number one, continue to comply with conditional use permit 1129, and number two, to continue to comply with conditional use permit 1316. And then number three, determine if additional screenings required for this request. And that's all that I have.
All right, thank you. Quick roll call of members who visited the site. Jason Wienerman?
Yes.
Dave Bentroot?
Yes.
Jason Krone?
Yes.
I was there. Rich Blankish?
I was there.
Tara Ostendorf?
Yes.
And Joe Persky?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's see, we have an applicant. Introduce yourself, please. Your name and address, and anything you might want to add to the report so far?
My name is Jody Macarthur. Address is 8566 150th Street, Kimball, Minnesota.
Nothing to add to the discussion at this point? Commission members?
Mr. Chair, question for Jody, the applicant. How long has the trucking business been going on?
The whole time.
Okay.
Ever since I built the shop. It just kind of got missed, I think. It was the whole, but yeah, I had the trucking at that time, too.
So follow-up question for the staff. So this is a CUP for a trucking operation. Should this be an after-the-fact CUP?
Technically, yeah, it's after-the-fact. Yeah, because it wasn't the trucking. We looked back in the 2011 permit, and trucking was never part of that application. So yeah, technically, it's an after-the-fact permit.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, question for staff. So at that time, would have it just been how that CUP was written up, or would have it required two additional CUPs?
It could have all been wrapped up in one conditional use permit.
It was just clarifying that. Okay, thank you.
Other questions, statements, anyone? This hearing is open to the public. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to address this agenda item, you can please come up to the podium and introduce yourselves. Appears we've got no one from the public. Is there some correspondence?
No, I did not receive any written correspondence.
Mr. Chair, motion to close public hearing.
Thank you, Jason. A second?
Second.
Jason made a motion, Dave a second, to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign? No? Motion carries. Thank you. Further discussion?
I've got a question regards to, in the packet, there's reference to a gate that needs to be put on the road to the gravel pit. And I'm looking at the schematic you have up on the screen right now. Please back that up. Nope, I want to go back to what you had up there. See, there's an entrance coming off of 150th? And then that is the route to get to the gravel pit? And I can't imagine you want to put the gate there because that's an access to your trucking.
Right. The gate is, the gate is up. There is a gate there.
Yeah. If you go to the aerial photo, the specific driveway down to the gravel pit, there is a gate.
Yep.
Okay, right, okay. All right.
I had pretty new batteries in it.
And like in that picture there, all this stuff... And like in that picture there, all this stuff, not all the stuff, but most of the stuff east of the shop there, out in that field, Arvic was putting Internet in, so they were putting their stuff there, so.
Oh, okay.
I mean, granted, there is a lot of stuff there right now, because everything out of our shop is in one of those trailers, or, I mean, it doesn't look the best right now. Just because the shop is...
It's under construction.
No.
Sure. Okay. Anything more?
Mr. Chair, so on the construction schematic, are you moving the building? So is the footprint of the building moving to the east, or are you going to have two buildings?
No, that was just a possible future building.
Okay. All right, thank you.
The new building is exactly the same.
Okay.
I moved two doors, one foot. I mean, that's all I did.
I was confused by the future and existence.
And that's why this all kind of delayed a little bit, too, because I didn't think I needed a permit, because I was going right in the same foundation, and I found out I had to.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could, do you anticipate any additional traffic? Anything changing as far as that goes? Vehicles, trucks, in and out?
It's been the same since we built the shop. I think in '12 or '13, I think we built it.
Good.
So it's really been the same. I think what it was, how it maybe got missed is, too, is because with the excavating, with the gravel pit and the conditional use, all that stuff, I think maybe that's, we were just concentrating on that and didn't know. I didn't know a difference on the, that I needed to have a different title for both businesses. I figured out on both that I didn't know there was another permit or whatever. Like you said, it was kind of an overlook.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, one question. It's actually a question for staff. When I went out there, it had already snowed, so you couldn't see really a whole lot. I'm just wondering if staff was able to observe that there was actually the stormwater infiltration basin and the sediment basin that's on the plan set from 2019? Was that actually constructed? Because I don't see it on the aerial.
It's right between the two driveways there. When you go right there...
Right. Yeah, it's out there. I was out there in January with Jody, and it was also snowing that day, but not like it did Monday and Tuesday. But yeah, that depression, that area is still there, kind of where, yeah, Shelley's moving the mouse.
Okay.
Anything further? All right, with that, we'll go to the findings of facts. Is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, I believe the request is applicable to zoning ordinance 439, specifically Sections 4.8 and 9.10.5 of the Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance.
Thank you, Dave. Does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county? Please list applicable sections.
Mr. Chair, I believe it does. Under the business goals and then the rural business policies, number three, which is to encourage rural businesses seeking expansion in ag areas to locate near major transportation corridors, townsite, mixed-use areas, or transitional areas, which is clearly, yeah, right off of a transportation corridor.
Thank you, Jason. Is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, I believe it is. There is not a change in the site characteristics, just an upgrading of the conditional use permit.
Thank you, Jason. Has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, we have the conditions of the previous conditional use permits, so that will meet the standard.
Certainly, thank you, Jason. Are we looking at any other issues pertinent to this matter with township or city, federal, state, local permits, environmental concerns, anything like that?
Mr. Chair, I think it's pertinent that this was an oversight of a previous CUP to include the language, and it's really not going to be making a change in what people have been experiencing over the last 10 years.
Certainly, so noted. Thank you, Jason. After that, now I am expecting a motion, please.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion to recommend approval of the request, and in this case, we don't have...
We have three.
Okay, I'm trying to find them. Yes, thank you, with the three recommended conditions.
If I remember right, that third one was still kind of up for discussion about whether or not we wanted more berms.
And what I'll say to that is, I'm not too concerned about number three, one and two. Conditions one and two with complying with the CUP from 1129 and then complying with the CUP 13 to 16, I'm good with.
How do we feel about that? Is everyone else okay with that?
Mr. Chair, I'd second that motion.
All righty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Thank you. All righty. Moving on to agenda item number three. Number three is to consider a conditional use permit application submitted by Excel Energy, DBA Northern States Power Company, Minneapolis, Minnesota, according to Sections 4.8 and 7.11 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance 439, to reconstruct and realign approximately four miles of 69 kilovolt transmission line. The proposed project is located in part Sections 25 and 36 of Avon Township and in part of Section 1 of Collegeville Township. Your review, please.
All right, so this is a reconstruction and a partial realignment of a 69 KV transmission line by St. John's. This is in both Avon Township and Collegeville Township. Property is within the Avon Hills Overlay District and Shoreline Overlay District of Stump Lake, which is a natural environment lake. Proposed condition for this is that the conditional use permit is subject to execution and recording of easements along the entire transmission line route, and the applicant shall provide a legal description of the easements prior to recording the conditional use permit. So the maps with the application show which areas are being rerouted and which areas are being replaced in their existing location. But that's all I have at this point.
All right, well, let's do a quick review of members who have visited the site. Jason Wienerman?
It's a long site, so I got a bunch of it.
Okay, Dave Bentroot?
No.
Jason Cron?
Yes.
I was there. Rich Blinkish?
Yes.
Tara Ostendorf?
Some sections, I guess.
Certainly.
Sure.
Joe Persky?
Yes.
Yes, all right, thank you. What else we got? We got an applicant handy?
Mr. Chair, there are, I believe, a couple online, too.
Okay.
That are applicants.
Oh, sure, okay. How many have we got?
I believe there's two online.
Applicants, please introduce yourselves.
Yeah, hi, I'm Dan Nelson with HDR Engineering, the project manager for the transmission line rebuild. We are the consulting firm working with Excel Energy to rebuild that transmission line.
Thank you.
And I am Ben Arbizani, also HDR. I am the designer working under Dan for this project.
Thank you.
And I'm Connor Puff with WSB, working on behalf of Excel Energy for the setting and land rights component.
All right, thank you. Thanks for being here. Is there anything you wish to add at this point? Anyone? Commission members, questions?
Mr. Chair, just a question in general. I want to make sure I'm understanding it right. So there's an area that's basically being replaced, and then there's an area that's being rerouted. And if I'm understanding, the blue area is the portion that's being rerouted. Why rerouting? Why is that section being rerouted? I guess that's what I'm trying to understand.
Ben, do you want to answer that one, or me go?
Is your microphone on?
Yeah, can you hear me? Okay. So the power line, through studies on engineering, certain areas required the power line to be reconstructed, and with landowner and community engagement, we had spoken to landowners about certain sections that maybe changed path of where the existing path of the power line was, in some cases, bringing it closer to the road, and in other cases, in other cases, moving it away, so.
So in this case, just looking at land, or is that St. John's? Right? St. John's wanted to move the line?
I mean, there's landowner communication that, with approval through discussion with them.
I would guess that was the landowner. Outside of them just wanting to move the line, though, like, and I am all for property rights, but I'm just confused if, or curious if there's any other logical reasons outside of them just wanting to move it that would justify rerouting a line.
I believe that there was some soil tests over, off of County Road 159, that deemed a little bit more suitable in other areas with engineering studies and tests, modeling that would provide, you know, there's wind speeds and other factors that go into all the analysis, that there are certain areas that, kind of weighing of variables.
Okay.
And I could jump in a little bit. You know, a lot of this, or a portion of this stretch, does go around between, or, you know, kind of through those two lakes, right there. And they're pretty much always underwater, so to increase the reliability of the line and try and give it essentially as much life out of it as possible, we're trying to move that out of that area. And if there were to anything, you know, anything to happen to that line, it wouldn't be something in such a highly traveled area. Other stretches are to move it, you know, like Connor had mentioned, you know, closer to the road, for, you know, for more service and more reliability, I guess. And other places where this is a radio line to serve the St. John's substation, and with that, we can't take the line out, so it's either build fairly expensive temporary lines or look at rerouting portions of it to reduce, you know, outages and reduce the amount of temporary alignment that needs to be installed.
Thank you for that, thanks for the clarification on that. So, and I can understand, that would seem like a logical justification with the two bodies of water right there for rerouting, and then it would make sense to keep it along the roadways for access. So do you know, was that a recommendation from the engineering, from you guys on the engineering side?
I would say it started with us to recommend, you know, honestly, there were probably other routes that we had considered to reroute the entire line, and that was just based off of, you know, whether or not we could get outages. And basically, once we found out that it was a radio line, you know, our first, you know, kind of go-in was to recommend a complete reroute to keep everything online while we were doing this rebuild. But, you know, obviously realizing that that's not a possibility, so it was something that we kind of worked as much as possible with everybody involved to get something that was, you know, as agreeable as possible with everybody and to try and, you know, make, you know, make everybody as happy as we could to build this without the, with the least amount of interference. You know, it's including, you know, trees, maintenance, you know, environmental with the lakes, and, you know, trying to do the best we can to mitigate, you know, the interference that we're going to have, you know, in this area at the time of construction.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I question, and I did not get a chance to get out there, but according to the application here, are all the power poles out there now, are they wood? And are all of them being replaced by steel and cement? Or just some that are in, underwater or near water? How is that looking?
Ben, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but we have a mixture of wood poles, steel poles, and even some laminated wood poles. We did try to, on any of the corners, kind of mitigate the land interference there, so that might mean that we would put a steel pole on a concrete foundation to reduce the amount of guying, support on a structure. So we did try to, you know, mitigate the footprint as much as possible, but I would say a majority of tangents and small angles are going to be standard roundwood poles that you would see out there right now, just probably, you know, considerably larger based off of new criteria, new NESC code requirements, and taller just to make sure that we're meeting the required, you know, ground clearance for the transmission line and any distribution that's going to be on there. A majority of the structures aren't in water, but that stretch along the two lakes right there, that is, yeah, on that right side, I remember driving it, I think, last summer, and there, you know, there's a considerable amount of wood in the water, which typically means, you know, potential failures pretty quickly.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I have a question, just for clarification. So it doesn't seem to be anywhere in here that says what the change is going to be aesthetically. Is this, I think you had mentioned it's going to be larger, are these much larger power poles? What's the change there?
As far as, like, the actual size of the pole, I don't know if you would actually notice the size difference, but they will be taller, I think, maybe 10 or 15 feet to account for the distribution that's going to be there. And the addition of shield wire, it's actually an OPGW fiber line being installed. But again, Ben, correct me if I'm wrong on any of that information.
No, that's correct. Yeah, just a little bit taller to account for meeting clearances and codes.
I have a follow-up to that. So you talked about public engagement as being a major reason for some of the minor realignment here. Was there comparisons of pre and post of what you guys are doing kind of shown to the public? Because I assume some of the concerns are the power poles that are there now versus what's going in.
Right. Yeah, we did have, I believe, at least three town hall meetings to show what the existing structures would look like versus the new structure types that would, you know, that would be out there. You know, kind of a comparison between, you know, height differences and a comparison of the existing alignment with proposed alignments till we got, you know, to this point of that alignment.
Thank you.
Joe?
I've got a couple questions. First of all, is some of that construction already underway? Is that along 94 on the existing line?
There is another stretch of this, you know, it's kind of separated out between sections. So there is a section going west that is being rebuilt right now, and so it's sectioned out between Avon to this tap and then this tap going down to Brockway, I think. And then there's this tap line, which is, you know, a project going from that tap down to the St. John's substation.
Yeah, I thought I noticed on 94, there were some of those large laminated poles. Are those part of this project?
There will be, Ben, give me some more details on this, but there will be a handful, I want to say three, laminated wood dead-end structures, I believe two switches on the north side of 94.
And then the end of the line on campus, is that at the power plant at St. John's?
Yeah, the end of this line goes into a very small substation at the St. John's campus.
And is their generator still operational?
I believe so. I believe they, I believe so.
Okay. And then are they taking any of that energy off that solar field? Or is that just putting on, put on the grid?
I guess I don't have an answer for that. I'm not sure.
I have one more, one more follow-up question. I wasn't at any of these public engagement meetings and know nothing. On your segment three, which is page three of four on your submitted figures here, the section along Fruit Farm Road on the, what is it? On the east side of the road, it shows the temporary line going in. And on the west side of the road, the reconstructed in place line, that that shows, just looks like it's in the tree line. Can you just describe what the intent is there for the tree line there on Fruit on the Fruit Farm Road? I'm really familiar with the road, so I'm just curious.
Sure, so the temporary line, you know, I believe we're going to hang as much of the alignment out towards the roadside to mitigate any kind of tree clearing for the temporary side of things. And on the west side, you know, it's kind of the same situation. At the corner, at the, say, the very top corner, where there's going to be, I believe there should be a steel dead end structure with a foundation, again, to minimize any kind of guying going into anybody's property, reducing that footprint and having as much of the conductor, you know, typically you'll see, you know, a post insulator on one side and then midway down, a post insulator on the other side. And then a little bit further down, you're going to have one on the other side. So it's going to kind of jump back and forth because it's the best way to reduce, you know, the amount of height you need. With this stretch, we are going to hang, and again, Ben, correct me if I'm wrong on that, we're going to hang all of the conductor out on the roadside to mitigate, you know, any tree clearing on that side.
Mr. Chair, Jason?
Yeah, that is correct.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say that is correct, yeah.
Mr. Chair, question for the applicants. So, if this rerouting is not approved, what does that do to the operation? Does it make it significantly more expensive? Does it mean this is a no go? What happens if this is not granted?
I mean, there would be, there would definitely be a significant cost to, you know, to reviewing this additionally and trying to find, you know, other solutions. You know, I can't say to the viability of other options at this point, but it would be, it would be very challenging. I mean, we have been working for more than a year to, I guess, to find the best solution possible for, you know, for everyone and tried to account for every landowner's, you know, inputs and do the best that we could. You know, the real reason for this project is to, you know, the age of the line, it's time for, to rebuild this line or else, you know, that, you know, there'd be some, there may be some like mitigating issues that we're concerned with, so we're trying to do, you know, I guess Excel Energy is trying to do their due diligence to make sure that, you know, we have reliable power in this area. So that's, that's kind of the basis of the project and we've identified these, you know, this alignment is something that needs to be rebuilt. So that's, that's kind of the basis for the project.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I think I may have one more question.
Okay, Tara.
On that same segment on page three of four, segment three on Fruit Farm Road there where it goes and has the big curve on the north side of the map there between the Ike property and the Ostendorf property? No relation. FYI. The other side of the road, that's entirely owned by St. John's University? It looks like, just for clarification? And I'm just, just wondering what, well, and I guess if the public comment is there, but just wondering if there was any previous comment on the placement of that corner structure there, on what it looks to be the Ike Ike and the Ostendorf property there? Is that going to be a pretty large structure there for that corner power pole?
Ben, I'm going to rely on you to answer this one for the size of that, size of that structure.
Yeah, so that structure is going to be larger, as we described earlier, based on clearances and requirements. And during two of the three town hall meetings that we had with the landowners, Mr. Ostendorf and the other one, I forgot his name, sorry. They both were shown pictures and kind of size comparisons to what the pole, how big the pole will be. And it is going to be replaced in the exact same location, but without all of the guy wires, since it's going to be a new steel pole. So it's going to decrease the footprint. It is going to be taller, but it will decrease the footprint and it's being replaced in the exact same location that it is now. And all landowners have been made aware of that change.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, another question for the applicants. So, there's been discussion about a public engagement meeting. Was there any testimony or commentary provided and documented during that meeting? Or was it just sort of a presentation discussion framework?
I would say it was more of a presentation, you know, we brought posters and talked through, you know, some of the concerns of the landowners. And, you know, each time we, you know, we recorded that information and brought it back to the design team to, you know, to try and, you know, look at other solutions, you know, review the alignment and really do the best that we could for everybody to, I guess, you know, again, to do the best for everybody involved. And, you know, there were considerable changes with the alignment and, you know, kind of mitigating any of the as least amount of interference as possible.
Thank you.
Anything further? All right, this is a hearing that's open to the public. If there's someone here who wishes to speak to address this issue, please come up to the podium.
I want to hear what you've got to say.
Russ Klein, I'm representing St. John's. I guess the address is 2850 Appie Plaza. I think I'm probably just going to stay up here because I'm probably going to be answering a lot of questions, I think. Joe, I want to answer one of your questions. You asked if we are co-generating or if our generators are functioning? I just want to clarify, they are not currently, just for the record.
That was a coal burning plant, was it not?
It was years ago. Now we're natural gas. But we do have steam turbine generators that will actually go online. But I just thought, just for clarification, I would say that they're currently not functional. So. And then Jason, I think you had a question, kind of, maybe we could pull up one of the maps that kind of shows kind of that weird jockeying around? And I just want to explain kind of some of the thought process on behalf of St. John's.
Yeah, no, that'll be good. Honestly, I mean, it makes sense to me, to be honest with you. If it's going around those lakes and there's engineering reasons, that's the most logical route that I see. But I'd be curious to hear your perspective on that.
Well, I mean, so, you know, just from the perspective of St. John's, so not only from an engineering standpoint. So if you can zoom, can you zoom in on that map even more? Or is this all we have? But kind of where it jogs, so that's the area on campus we refer to as Flint Town. So we have approximately 400 students maybe that live in Flint Town. That's our third and fourth year students. And right now, that transmission line kind of runs right down County Road 159 and then right up Fruit Farm Road. So right through kind of the heart of our senior or fourth and third and fourth year housing. So naturally, when this, you know, the Excel approached us and the community saying, you know, this line is in a deferred state, we need to replace it, one of the first things, you know, we'd like to get it out of Flint Town. The other part about being on along County Road 159, St. John's is one, you know, we're a large economic driver in the area. Our football games in fall will have 12,000, 13,000 people that visit campus. You know, getting those, the transmission poles out of the sight line, that does, you know, it's a motivator for us, for sure. So I guess I just wanted to clarify those, those two things.
All right, thank you. Anyone have anything to add? Please come up.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, this is Tim Hague from Collegeville Township, 14234 Fruit Farm Road. I'm those trees on exhibit number whatever. I'd like to point out just a little bit of, a little bit of background on this project. Going back, this line, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, let's just say circa 1960, the existing line is built. I'd like to, I'd like to ask county staff if the lakes that have been referenced earlier, are they really lakes? Or are they just dammed up north fork of the Watatab River, serving as the storm or the wastewater treatment ponds for St. John's campus? They're not lakes. Here's the 1965 air photo showing that it's just, it's actually a field. So, there's kind of a history here of building infrastructure and then crowding it and then saying, oh shoot, we have a problem. And asking everybody else to pick up the slack. So, yeah, if you drive along that County 159 coming into campus right now, you're going to see some some really compromised electrical structures. They weren't compromised originally, they were in a, in a field. And then the dam got constructed and flooded that whole area and, well, that's caused a little bit of a problem. I think we can all recognize that. And then Flint Town got developed with virtually no respect for the road or the infrastructure, no setbacks were maintained, it just smashed everything in. And then you look at it today and go, yeah, it kind of makes sense that why is that power line there? And I would agree as a neighbor coming into, I drive that road more than probably anybody on the planet. And if, and I look at it today and I say, yeah, why is that power line there? Why is that power line coming right through Flint Town? That's really valuable real estate. That's my background on that, but what I'll say is that if you can solve it on your own land, I don't care. You want to run the blue line past the solar field up 325th, whatever, as long as you get the necessary easements and approvals? I don't care. That's yours. I'd like to now focus in on Tim's little neighborhood there, on the corner of Fruit Farm Road with Jeff Inck and the Ostendorfs and my brother Greg and his wife to the south. So, I own, speaking for my property, I own right up to the road right of way of Fruit Farm Road. Those are my red pines that I planted 30 plus years ago. And in 1960, when this power line went through, Jeff Inck's house didn't exist. That was, that land was purchased in 1965. And the people that owned the farm that I live on granted an easement to NSP for a single power pole with nine guy wires, with nine supports. And I would just speculate that we're talking the size of the pole. Let's just be generous and say it's a two footer, maybe an 18 inch. It's a good sized wood pole that's there. And then there's nine cables that go in. And it's being proposed to be replaced right in my neighbor's yard with a four foot diameter steel structure. We can talk about footprints, but yeah, the four foot steel structure, if you add up the sum total of all those little cables and the wood pole, it's a significant change in the wrong direction. It's a significant impact. And Jeff and Sandy are about the nicest people in the world and they would never so much, if they thought you had even the slightest you know, right to do something, that they'd probably let you go ahead and do it. I'm just going to say that, looking at my neighbor's situation, I wouldn't want that darn thing sitting right next to my next to my garage, next to my well, next to all my, all my stuff, kind of dominating the landscape. And then for my part, going south along Fruit Farm Road, the poles are where they are, they're right on the road right of way. There is no easement in towers to do that. I think the current staking shows the new poles five feet into my trees. The current staking, and I understand this is all up for conversation on what construction methods could be used to change that. But it would, it would, we're talking a pretty significant change and it was just approached today to grant an 18 foot easement into my property. And I'm just going to say that has not been secured. And I don't see that being secured. Now, if we're building a line on the, a temporary line on the other side of the road, it begs the question, why aren't we building the whole line on the other side of the road? The cross country transmission line is an important piece of infrastructure, but it serves no one more so than St. John's. And I just think, hey, if you can solve your problem on your own land, much like the blue line to the north, I think that would be an appropriate place to look before you start leaning on your neighbors and saying, give us more land because now we need more room for our, for our bigger, better, more awesome power line. That's cool, but we run off of the distribution lines, which are the two very small wires hanging on the bottom of those poles. We don't need the big monsters to serve us. Our stuff could be done 100% underground. I've been told that this line can't be done underground, the big cross country transmission line. But by golly, I mean, where there's a well, there's a way. If it's that valuable a property on one side of the road, it's just as equally valuable on the other side. And I think we need to look at all options. Anybody have any questions for me?
Mr. Chair, I have a question for, I guess, maybe other residents or locals that'll be around that area. What did that public comment period look like? That's one thing, I know there was different discussions, but I don't know when they happened either or how the public was informed or involved with those. So if anyone can provide insight, that would be helpful.
I'll be happy to address that. I think they did, there was clearly a good communication between the applicants and St. John's. They seemed to be working in tandem. It seemed quite evident that they had been talking about this project quite a bit before the rest of us were introduced to it. But they did have, they did have at least, I attended at least two, and I think there was a third meeting that I was out of state for. But they had lots of colors and charts and basically saying, here's what we, you know, and they did ask for input and feedback. But in our stoic Stearns County condition of not saying anything unless we're asked directly, nobody really spoke up. There were a couple of people, and unfortunately, one of those people that can't keep his yap shut. But I mean, if we, if we looked at all of the people's concerns, the phone calls that I got from my neighbors afterwards and saying, hey, you're going to be at this meeting, right? You're going to, you're going to say something, right? And it's kind of, I feel like it's my responsibility to look out for my neighbors as well as my own interests. But I do think that they did a good job of presenting. They were, but there was no decisions made, but they did present it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Come up, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee. That, see the green roofs there? That's my house. Fruit Farm Road 14246, I'm Greg Hague. That would be Tim's brother. I just want to touch on some other issues here. Back when I was a member of the Collegeville Planning Board in 2003, St. John's and a group approached us about forming Avon Hills Initiative, which eventually led to the Avon Hills Overlay, which is a conservation design overlay for like 50 square miles. And St. John's still touts it on their website quite a bit, how we're doing such great things for the environment and all, you know, everyone should get a conservation easement on their property. Yet in that time since 2003, St. John's has, I think I counted, I was going through the records, I got 15 variances for height, setbacks to natural environment lakes, different setbacks to roads, non-conforming building structures. Have you seen the dome? Have you seen the baseball field lights that go above the trees? It's just annoying. This power line serves St. John's. And they want to stick it in my field. No, I don't like it. I don't like it one bit. There's, they are the largest landowner in Collegeville Township. They have plenty of room on their side of the road. Put it over there. They should all be on their side of the road. It's just silly. You see the stakes? They're going to cut my entire tree line. I get a four foot metal diameter pole and three big ones right through the front. And I don't like it. This, it's silly that these people can talk about being great conservationists, yet not in my backyard. When CapEx 2020 came through, do you remember that one? Yep, where did it go? It went outside of the Avon Hills, it went south by Cold Spring because St. John's claimed that we've got red shouldered hawks that are, you know, environmentally sensitive areas, you know? CapEx 2020 didn't even come close. When St. John's put their solar field in, what did they do? They buried that line underground so they didn't have to look at it, all the way out to the interstate. But I get a giant power line in my yard and I lose all my trees that I planted to block the light pollution from their buildings. It sucks. All right, that's all I got. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm Dan Vogel from County Road 159, Avon, Minnesota. And to address a few different things here, those meetings that we talked about briefly, those were all set up to appease St. John's. There was, there was talk, they listened to what the neighbors had to say, but every time it was where they were gonna put this line. Another thing I'd like to address is the, the idea that, to put a new, to put a new line in and leave the existing line up and running. Well, my idea from the start, which I said at all the meetings, was to start the new line on section thirty-one of St. Wendell Township, bring it across the freeway on that end of the ramps instead of on the west end. Follow the, follow the right of way along the freeway there up to County Road 159, stay on the south side, or excuse me, on the east side of County Road 159 on St. John's property, it's their line, and follow it all the way. And we did have some discussion about the lakes here, the power line right now goes right, excuse me. Please. Power line right now goes on the east side and there's one hole in the water there. See that? That's the widest section of water there. If they send that line on the other side, this is a much narrower area with, with high property on each side, that holes could be put. If we, if we, if we followed, if we followed County Road 159 right up to campus and, and right around the side of campus, that would take the high voltage line right out of Flinttown, which is one of the concerns that St. John's has. And I don't know how many of you members went out to look at the site, I don't know, some of you did, but if you'd look at Road 3, 325, I believe it is, it's not quite on this, if you could move this map down here, right here, if you look at the difference between these power poles and the ones on this side of the road, these are like toothpicks here, and that feeds twenty, twenty households or twenty-one households up there. That's all any of the neighbors need is a, a power line like that. They don't need St. John's power line. St. John's needs St. John's power line, that's why it should be shifted over onto their side. And also, when it comes to the future, if there's future development, what are we gonna do? Move these people, move these tax-paying people's homes out of there so they can make a bigger line in the future? We have to look at the future. That's why, again, if we put it over on St. John's side, there's plenty of room for all the development they need, it doesn't disrupt the students, it's a, it's a no-brainer. And the, the gentleman that we were talking to online there, you know, said that they looked at all kinds of other, other ways. Well, I don't believe they looked at anything else but what St. John's wanted. I don't think there was any other studies.
Okay.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have correspondence? Any correspondence?
Mr. Chair, we did get the two letters that were emailed to you guys yesterday, and there's, you received hard copies. One was from Mr. Vogel who just spoke. The other one was from Stephen and Linda Sulp. So I can just highlight a few of their concerns. They wanted a better explanation for the, why the realignment is needed. They felt it does not positively contribute to the comprehensive plan goals for Stearns County. They were concerned with it crossing a creek and wetland area, questioned what will happen with the existing poles, and wanted to see engineering that supported a realignment.
Okay, and someone else had, wanted to add something?
Thank you, appreciate your time. So I'm Craig Blonigan, I am representing the Avon Township Planning Commission. I'm here at the behest of the Board of Supervisors. So a couple of things that we have discussed are, one, it appears that the, this process has violated our resolution zero eight zero five two zero, to where the power company would have to come before our supervisors and explain their plans, give the rationale, et cetera. That hasn't happened, so the supervisors, at this point, are not in favor of moving forward. In our meeting last night, we discussed that in what we saw, there was no indication that all the old poles, if this is approved, would be removed, the holes filled in, et cetera. And it just seems like there's been a complete lack of communication with at least our township. That's all I've got to say. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Staff can we respond to that? Should there have been a recommendation, or should we have a recommendation from the township?
I was unaware of that resolution or that provision. I don't.
Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, Angie Berg, Environmental Services. I'm not familiar with the exact resolution, but I do know that Jennifer Buckantine in our office reached out to both Collegeville and Avon Townships, and they both deferred permitting to Stearns County because some of this was in Shoreland, so it would have been three conditional use permits instead of one. And so, I don't, I don't have in front of me, I could get my computer and try to figure out who told her that it was okay it was here, but that's, that's what we were told.
Thank you. Joe, I know you got another question.
I'll wait, I'll wait.
Okay, I ask, please.
Hello, I'm Garrett Vogel, I'm Dan Vogel's son. And the question was brought up earlier about cost. I don't know much about how much this stuff costs, but I do know geometry, and the shortest distance between two points is a straight line. And the straightest line is to follow the road, not go around all this stuff, just like my dad had explained. And then, two, Russ Klein here, he said that they wanted to keep it away from the road because it's an eyesore, but it's also put in place for them. How do you think that makes us feel when they wanna put it in our property, and then it's our eyesore? That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Leroy Gundren from Avon Township Board. We did give the county the authority to hold this hearing tonight so it wouldn't be a duplicate hearing. We are, we were fully aware of the, the line they're constructing on the north side of the interstate. We were not informed of, of this extension. So, that's what Craig was talking about. In addition to what Craig said, I, I'm just wondering about the, the old line. I, I heard years back that St. John's, when they put the solar fields in, they had to build a, a line to Avon, to the substation in Avon. I'm just curious, and I don't know if the engineers from the company know, will that line be dead? And they'd be using this transmission line to take all the power from the solar fields? And if that would be the case, I would like to see that line gone, if there's, if it's just gonna sit there. Because I think we had, when I was on the Planning Commission, we dealt with one in Brockway Township that, they rerouted the line and the line is still setting there, five miles of line that's dead. Rich, you might remember that. I guess that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Leroy.
Mr. Chair, Leroy, I just have a follow-up question. So when Jennifer reached out to you, did the township think that she was referring to the lines that were being reconstructed north on ninety-four currently?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, we're, we're aware of what, what's going, we, we weren't aware they were gonna realign. We just thought they were gonna follow the original line.
Okay, okay.
So, this kinda, we question why they're moving the line. I mean, I, I think it's apparent to most of us why they're moving the line where they are.
So, Mr. Chair, the reason I ask that is because we do have memorandums of understanding with seventeen of our townships, and in those townships, and we have agreements, and in Avon's situation, they handle, they would handle this conditional use permit. And so that's why we reached out, you know, it's unfortunate that we didn't communicate or it wasn't clear exactly it was gonna be realigned instead of just reconstructed. So, yes, that's why it's a little bit confusing, I think.
Mr. Chair, question for staff. Where is the exact township line?
It's, it's just above the red line that goes flat, you can see the dark black line above that?
Just north of Fruit Farm Road.
Just north of Fruit Farm Road?
Yeah.
Fruit Farm Road is Collegeville Township.
Yeah. Yeah, the solar panels you see on the map are Avon Township.
Yeah, it's a little lower than the blue line.
Okay.
It's the black line, yeah.
Okay.
We're not upset with the, the county, the communication with them, because we, we didn't know about the realignment, but we're a little disappointed that Excel or whoever didn't come to the township board to explain what they were doing. The first we knew about it was the notice of the public hearing here, so.
Thank you.
Leroy, I can, I can answer your question about the solar. So, St. John's, we actually don't own the solar fields, these are both community solar gardens. The line that goes underground, that actually goes to the Avon Substation, so none of that power goes direct, directly to St. John's, we don't, that is not our power at all. The big solar field, the three meg, that's actually owned by Berkshire Hathaway, and the other one is Best Power, so that's not St. John's solar fields.
Question for the applicant?
Please.
How many alternatives were proposed at the public hearing? Proposed alignments?
Um, gosh, I, I think when we started, obviously, I think we had maybe one or two. And then by, I, I believe the third meeting, we had gone through seven to ten probably different iterations for alignments, you know? I think main, main points were probably up by the interstate with the way that, that alignment work, with the lakes, and then down along Fruit Farm Road to, to find, you know, the, the best routes possible and, you know, kind of appease everybody there.
One more follow-up question. What, just a follow-up question, just 'cause we were talking about how long this project's been going on already, what percentage of design do you guys think you're under right now?
I would say ninety percent.
Okay, thank you.
CDs or DDs? I mean, this would be construction documents you're ninety percent at?
Yes, I believe we have, you know, some, maybe a civil package that needs to be completed, but for the most part, you know, the design, the design is complete, we just need to, you know, finalize everything and get it, get it onto, you know, a construction schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I got a question too for the applicant. I, I am curious, there's that run on Fruit Farm Road that runs kinda north and south and then curves back, that is apparently adequate for the temporary line. And the concern about these larger poles and replacing what is currently there, why couldn't the permanent line go where the temporary line is going? And what would be the implications of just staying where it's at, as far, at least as far as the temporary line is concerned? I don't quite understand why it is necessary to jump across to, and impact the other property owners with much larger footprint than what's currently there.
I, I guess, at, at this point, you know, the existing alignment is there, so that was our basis for, for utilizing that location for the, the permanent transmission line. You know, utilizing the, the, the temporary easement on the other side of the road is trying to mitigate any, you know, additional easement costs for, for where the location is, and try to mitigate, you know, again, you know, trimming trees and, and cutting trees down, you know, that, that are, that are already there. I mean, I guess it's, it's pretty much trying to reduce the amount of impact in the entire area.
Mr. Chair, question for the applicants. So under our county plan goals, we have a somewhat related broadband internet connectivity policy where we're seeking to adopt the dig-ones approach to align efforts for the planning, relocation, installation of broadband conduits. Have you reached out to anybody else, any other entities who might be interested in using your corridor or your conduit to partner in the installation of this, so that we can concentrate impact as opposed to having people come back three, five years down the road looking for something somewhere else?
I might defer to Connor on that one. I'll say that, you know, we, we haven't reached out, but, you know, maybe that there are, there are agreements or, or an understanding, I guess, between, you know, say, overhead comm lines or anything like that, that, that might be, that might be installed on those structures.
As it relates to Ben's earlier comment about the height of the poles and leaving space at the top of each one of the towers, he mentioned a term OPGW, which is overhead protective ground wiring. It has multiple purposes, it's a fiber communication. So there, there's, hasn't been conversations that have reached, but there's, there's room in, in the design for the potential of having conversations to that extent.
Thank you.
No formal conversations.
Okay. Joe?
If I'm reading the map correctly, am I looking at, the purple is existing easement, and they're just looking at putting larger poles on the existing easement? All the other changes are on St. John's property that are in red except for up there on Louis Hemzil's property up there by ninety-four? Is that correct?
I believe that's the case. Ben, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Yeah, sorry, trying to understand the question of what would be, yeah.
What I'm saying is that, all the new alignment is on St. John's property with the exception up on Louis Hemzil's property up by ninety-four?
Uh, yes, that is correct.
And the rest of it is on existing easement, correct?
Correct.
And what's the status of that easement?
I've spoken with Louis Hemzil, and he was in support and favor of moving the poles away from his field closer to the road. I have Stearns County highway permit for County Road 159 all the way from there down there, throughout the project, so being able to utilize the road and, and working with Louis in the favor that he has of, of being, have more space on his property agriculturally to, to move around away from the poles.
And I guess, to say that, it doesn't really show it on this map where the existing line was on the north side, next to the interstate, but right now, there are transmission lines kinda out in that field, so that's what we've done is, is try to, you know, bump it up against to the, against the frontage road as much as possible to get out of that field.
Okay. Anything more?
Well, yeah, we're, we're still open, so, yeah, we're still open.
Tim Hig, I'll, I'll be real super brief. The section along Fruit Farm Road on the west side, there is no easement there. There, there is no easement for the power line, even the existing power line. My property line goes up to the road right of way, and that is where the poles are located, but there is no easement. In fact, I was approached today, they brought me an easement, asking me to sign it, and I won't. So, the, okay, and then also the staking for the proposed replacement along the west side of Fruit Farm Road is an additional five feet further into my property than the current poles are located. So, early on, I said, gee, there must be an easement, there's a big power line there. There's not. Nineteen, I don't, we can go into the details, but I don't wanna waste your time. If they plucked the poles out of the holes that the existing ones are in and put new ones in there, what can I do? Shrug my shoulders? But they're asking for an easement, they're asking for the right to take my trees, they're asking for a right to maintain into perpetuity for seven hundred bucks, by the way. And, so, and they're moving it five feet further onto mine. This existing power line was pushed as far to the periphery of St. John's property as it possibly could have been back in nineteen sixty, and all they want, just a few more feet into me, just a few more feet into my brother. Nope. If it, if you need more room, there's more room on the other side of the road than we have. We've only got eighty acres on our side, you got a couple thousand, you're good. Thanks.
Okay. Yeah, we got one more, and then we'll close it.
I would just like to say one more thing, sorry to take your time, but clearly it's a misrepresentation when they, when the fellow tells you that they gave us all these other
that they gave us all these other options every time. It was a rework of what they had already wanted. So we didn't have all these other options like he's trying to portray. Thank you.
Can I get a motion? Close the public hearing?
Yeah, yeah, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Jason made a motion and Rich seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Further discussion, ladies and gentlemen?
A question for staff. When we're going through one of these, what exactly is the planning commission's purpose when reviewing this? It's not necessarily to decide on an alignment or anything like that. So can you just clarify what the planning commission's purpose in this conditional use permit review is?
Angie Berg, Environmental Services. I do think it is alignment as well as other concerns related to public well, public health, safety and welfare. I think it's, I wrote down 11 things that I've heard of potential concerns. I don't think any of them are out of the purview of the planning commission. You know, lines of a certain size, if they're a certain size or bigger, aren't permitted by local governments, but this is a size that's small enough where it is permitted by a local government. I, I don't know, Tara, if that really answers your question. I, it all boils down to, it all boils down to if you think through your findings, are you gonna get, what are you gonna get? Shelley and I have been talking, you know, I don't know about all of you, but I think this, I would recommend it be continued. Not necessarily even to the next meeting. We could renotice, but I think there's an opportunity for Excel, St. John's, the neighbors all over again to get together and try to answer these 11 things or more and then come back with hopefully a different plan that's.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, to Angie's point, I was actually gonna go there next. I had a question for the applicant that had to do with timeframe and schedule. It doesn't sound like you have a construction schedule started yet because you're at 90% CDs. So if there's not some kind of major time conflict, this one to me is coming to us partially baked. And it's nice to have a little bit more of the I's dotted and T's crossed when it comes to the public side of it. Back to your point, Tara, we're dealing with land use conflicts and trying to prevent them when possible. And clearly there's, there's some things, not that you're ever gonna get 100% agreement when it comes to these issues, but we can get a little bit more things vetted out typically before we make a decision on something like this.
Mr. Chair, if I could echo on that, I, I am really, I could see moving away from those bodies of water that are there. I don't know what happened back in the 1960s, but, but they're there. And I could see maybe for repair and maintenance wanting to route around that. But I'm really struggling with the fruit to farm road. I think it's a real hardship for the property owners to put a much larger pole thing on their property when there's, would seem to be adequate room for St. John's to use their own land along that stretch of roadway. So I'm, I don't understand why that wouldn't be an option for the permanent location for that line down Fruit Farm Road.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. And I guess my concern too, along with Dave's, is the stat, is there an easement that those poles are on now? And why would, why, I'm curious why they would be there if there's no easement. Typically, we have utility easements when we have poles in place.
Mr. Chair, Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. Oftentimes there are unconfined easements on property because it was done a long time ago or blanket easements across properties. And one of the reasons they're probably trying to pursue getting specific easements is to get them confined and understood and clarified. And that's not uncommon. We see it in platting all the time when we deal with land. So it's, you know, different types of situations depending on when, when those lines were brought in.
Mr. Chair, another question for the applicants. Would you be open to continuing this or would you like us to make a vote on it tonight?
We are, you know, built into schedules. I think an opportunity to be able to, again, you know, as the existing power line, you know, in the initial, you know, 1960s of when the power line is built, there's a lot of, you know, that. But I, I guess I'll leave it up to, I guess, my colleagues as well to see if they, if they have any input as well.
Yeah, I mean, kind of like Connor had mentioned, you know, there is, it is a 90% construction package, but that's, you know, that's to say that we do have, you know, a construction schedule already on base and, you know, construction team planned out to start this work. So that's, that's where we're at and that's why I would have concerns with pushing this out just because, you know, it would, it would put a considerable gap in a large construction crew. And, you know, I guess I just wanna, I wanna say that we're, you know, we're up against it right now with a multitude of the delays with, with getting a route defined and making sure that we get something, you know, that is the best for everybody, I guess. And that's what we're trying to, you know, to kind of, we're butted up against. So that's what we're trying to kind of, to push a little bit more on, on trying to get going on this rebuild.
Mr. Chair, Angie Berg, you, as you know, you don't need the applicant's consent to continue. I understand that it's nice to ask for that. I'm not representing the applicant, but I just want them to understand that there's a question on there that says, have the applicants demonstrated they're meeting the requirements of the ordinance? And I would be concerned that you would have a hard time with that question tonight, which means if it ends up with a denial, then you can't reapply for a year. So maybe read between the lines a little bit on that, but I'll let the planning commission talk. Yeah, so in terms of the 60 days, that, as you know, staff can extend it for another 60. So we have until June for the county board to make a decision, which would mean the latest without a waiver would be May planning commission.
How do we feel?
Mr. Chair, question for the other board members in terms of continuance. What information can the applicant bring us that would assist us in making a better decision?
I think there needs to be a resolution with the property owners along Fruit Farm Road. And I think the township, we've always gone back to the township. They should be the first ones that get contacted on this kind of stuff. So I think we should do a continuance so that the applicant can make contacts with the township and also speak with St. John's and see if they would accept to move that line onto their own property. I think then we could make a resolution here.
And to echo that, I, I have not heard a reason why it couldn't be, the permanent line could not follow the temporary line location and be, and thus be less disruptive to the property owners to the west end, I guess would be north of that roadway.
If I can add to that, I'd also encourage the applicants to review our comprehensive plan goals and objectives under the business goals, the rural business policies.
Right, and I'd like to add that I think we need to have more, we mentioned the townships, but yeah, specifically Avon Township, especially that kind of got left in the lurch and completely out of this conversation apparently. And we need some clarification on these easements, whether or not they're there and exist. But we do have to keep in mind that spot where they're talking about putting that, replacing that bigger piece, there's already one there. So when you're talking about going to the other side where the temporary line is, you're gonna have to figure out how to, where to cross that street. And so that's another, that's another factor. So I make a move for a continuance.
I will second it.
I have made a motion. Richard seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just for the benefit of the public, this will be renoticed so everybody will get another mail, another letter in the mail and it will likely be for the May meeting unless for some reason it's continued after that.
Thank you, Angie. All right. Moving on to number four. Number four on our agenda is an application to consider a conditional use permit request submitted by BioGasco LLC of Rogers, Minnesota on behalf of Kathleen Weber Zonker and Joseph Zonker of Garfield, Minnesota according to Sections 4.8, 6.18 and 9.3.5 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance 439. The request is to operate a contractor's yard in the Agro40 zoning district. The property is part of the southwest quarter, the northeast quarter, lying east of County Road 12 in Section 22 of Munson Township. And review of the item, please.
All right, so just one clarification to start off with. BioGasco is now the land owner. They just weren't at the time the notice went out, so we needed Zonker's signature and their name in there, but they are officially the landowners now, so Zonkers aren't part of this anymore. So they are wanting a contractor's yard that would consist of a structure that would have an office and shop and then a material lay down yard for some of their materials would be included in that. There's gonna be some essential services as part of this site plan, which the essential services don't need the conditional use permit, but it is part of the whole project. Property is owned agriculture 40. It's not within any overlay districts. They have submitted a stormwater management plan. That's still in the process of being reviewed, but that will need to be approved before they can start construction on anything. Road access is from County Road 12, so they'll need an approach permit from the highway department for that. As it's proposed, the structures will meet the setbacks. There's room for parking. The signage proposed will meet the ordinance. There's vegetative screening proposed on the south side and there's an existing tree line on the north side of the property to help screen the outdoor storage area. They have four employees and no more than four employees will be on site on a regular basis. No more than 20 commercially licensed motorized vehicles, including trucks and trailers, are allowed to be on the property at any time. The accessibility code for that structure will be required to be met and Munson Township does have their own building inspector, so they'll be reviewing that as part of their building permit. Land use is in the area. There's 35 homes, three animal feedlots. There's a couple mining operations across the road. It's near Highway 23. Proposed conditions, stormwater management, so an approved stormwater management plans required. That will include needing to submit a financial guarantee for that too. Signs need to meet Ordinance 439. Screening, vegetative screening shall be installed along the south side of the project area and a financial guarantee to ensure that planting would be required. Limiting the site to no more than four employees on a regular basis on the property. Maximum of 20 commercially licensed motorized vehicles on the property and then the approach permit from the county highway department. And that's all that I have.
All right, thank you. We'll do a quick roll call of members who visited the site. Jason Wienerman?
Yes.
Dave Bentroot?
Yes.
Jason Krone?
Yes.
I did. Rich Blankish?
Yes.
Tara Austin Dorff?
Yes.
And Joe Persky?
Yes.
Thank you. Applicant, introduce yourselves, please.
Yes, hello, Aaron Evans. If I stand up too much, the microphone's in the way. Yeah, Aaron Evans, 14835 Crow River Drive, Rogers and owner of BioGasco.
Tim Evans from Coal Spring, 12802 Glen Cove Road. Obviously, Aaron is the owner and we're privileged to be in front of you folks.
Thanks for being here. Is there anything that you'd like to add to the discussion at this point?
Couple of quick things. With advice from Heidi and team, we did already approach Munson Township. Just an informational meeting, we got on their, on their board. We want it to be totally transparent, what we're doing, what we're trying to approve or what we're trying to get approved. That was not an approval process, just an informational thing. We also have contacted the county highway department. We're on the approach permit and I believe we're in our final stages of our stormwater right now. So just want to inform the county where we're at.
Further on the employees, I would just add that, yes, we have four employees. Two are in the field and/or visiting this location. Two work from home and are remote. They are not near this location. We are looking to make this our corporate address. So we are looking to bring our business to the area rather than Rogers. And, but, but the reason I bring up the employees is that even if we grow, there's still, there's still room for more people on site and our employees don't sit still. They, they come and go and so it's, it's not going to build into a giant complex or anything.
All right, thank you. Commission members, questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, you said you gave the township a briefing about what your intentions were. Could you just summarize that with us?
Yes, first of all, it went over very well. They had a lot of questions about BioGasco. What do we do? Not so much about the building and what we're trying to do there, but just a lot of questions about the renewable energy and that's really what we're into as far as the other core businesses. Our maintenance facility, that's what, that's what we're building here. But yeah, a lot of interest. The only, actually I took it as a takeaway, was one of the folks on the planning board is a chief of a fire department. I don't know what, which department it was, if it was a county or what, but he, he did ask that, an invitation to come out and take a look at one of our sites that he would like to see something like that. But no, I think it was a lot of questions and I don't believe any negativity during the meeting.
Just a general question, Mr. Chair. So what's actually happening at the site then? Do you guys have parts that you, because it's a contractor yard. So are you actually dealing with the gas on the site or are you going out? Because I know there's fermentation or I forget the proper term for those, those. Digestors, thank you. Digestors, not the fermentators throughout the county, so.
Yeah, just to be, I'll touch on a couple of those topics. So regarding our, our core business is constructing and owning anaerobic digesters on the farm. This particular site does not have any anaerobic digestion. There's no fermentation. There's no organics or volatile solids or anything coming from the farm except for gas. So I would say the majority of our work and the majority of what we do is construction. That takes up about 90% of our time, to be honest. And so this facility does serve two purposes. One is managing that, that construction business, being a place for equipment storage. We will have a few materials. Most of those materials will be things like parts, which we will store inside, hence the larger shed. larger shed or shop. Occasionally, there may be outdoor storage, which will be behind and out of sight. That would be something like HGP pipe work that are, you know, 20-foot lengths and piled. But, but they will be, relative to our neighbors, they will be very minimal. And then, in addition to that, what is happening is we are, it's called offloading compressed natural gas into the Northern Natural Gas Interstate Pipeline. So this site was, was ideal for two reasons. One, it has the Northern Natural Gas Pipeline on-site, and, and our future volumes, basically, if we are to grow the projects that we're doing in Stearns County at all, we need a pipeline large, with large enough capacity to put that gas into. So getting on to the Northern Natural Gas Interstate Pipeline was extremely important to us. This particular branch line is very different than most of Northern Natural Gas's 3,000-plus miles. This particular branch line is odorized to serve Painesville, Roscoe, and Richmond, and Coal Spring. Because it's odorized, we're able to transport odorized gas, which makes, you know, our entire operation that much more safe for us and the public. And, and so, you know, there will be incoming truck traffic, but that will all be almost solely part of the transport of natural gas, which is, which is the essential services that was mentioned at the beginning summary.
It's a great location for this.
Yeah.
I didn't know the gas line was under there. It was good just from a transportation perspective. That's like, that's a money site. Okay. Cool. Thank you for that.
Mr. Chair, one, a couple more questions. This body has seen a number of proposals for digestors. Just looking ahead, that you're putting this contractor field in here, are you seeing more into the future than we've noticed or that we're, we know about, or is this going to be expanding?
This site? This site will not be expanding, but the business we do...
But the business.
I am attempting to grow a business, yes. And so what we want to do is bring to you in the coming months several additional on-farm projects. These are manure-only, no industrial waste or anything like that. There, there's no manure transport in any of the projects. They are all on-farm digestors. However, we're in a rural county like most of Minnesota, and the pipeline infrastructure does not allow most farms to hook up directly to the pipelines. And so this will allow us to, to get that gas into the pipeline infrastructure, into the grid, as part of the essential services, as well as give us roots as a business, and give us a footprint, a meeting room in the event that someone wants to take a tour and learn about our business, and, you know, of course, the, the storage and everything else that we discussed.
Okay. And you alluded to my second question, and that is the commercial aspect of this. I serve also on the solid waste, Tri-County Solid Waste Commission. Are you looking at any potential in the commercial use, or have you seen any interest in the commercial use?
Yeah. So our primary target today is manure-based renewable natural gas. I do occasionally talk to others, including Jeff Bertram, who was aware that we were going to make this proposal. And we are very open to ideas. We have typically found the industrial waste side and/or sanitation side to occasionally be bureaucratic and hard to...
Joe, you're turning red. That's okay.
We would be very open to discussing.
Yeah, I mean, because it offers that opportunity for solid waste, opposed to just landfill and incineration, so, yeah.
It works very well for our equipment and for our, our plant design. It's just a matter of organizing and sourcing the proper feedstock, and, and there's a lot of planning that goes into it.
I would like to add to that. Any efficient transportation model, when we start hauling the gas, if you look at any type of hub-and-spoke operation, and the opportunities that we have in Stearns County and surrounding counties, this is a very unique site for us. Because of the hub-and-spoke and being efficient for transportation. So just want to throw that out.
Not to mention, we have one employee who lives in Richmond, one who lives in Coal Spring, and this is their home more than anyone else's, yeah.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, just a couple of questions related. So you're gonna, it sounds like your trucks are coming in, they're gonna offload to the site, and then that's injected into the natural gas line.
That is correct.
What's the flammability of the gas at the transfer point?
Yeah. So, and, and just to be very clear, we're talking about one truck, right? This is, this is one truck. We're not, we're not talking about a large fleet of trucks coming in, 20, 20 loads a day, nothing like that.
Yep.
So the flammability, yes. Under the right mixture of oxygen, methane is very flammable. That mixture is only about a four or six, don't quote me on this, but it's, it's about a 4% or 5% window of flammability, whereas if you have too little oxygen or too much oxygen, it is not flammable. Otherwise, it's typically classified as non-explosive, it's, but it is flammable, yes.
And it is also concerned, if you look up the hazmat regulations for the DOT, it's 2.1 flammable gas. Same characteristics as an LP or anything like that, as far as hazmat and the DOT when we start hauling stuff.
Okay. We good? We got any correspondence from the public, or anyone here wish to speak, to address this?
No written correspondence was received.
Motion to close?
I make a motion, we close.
Second.
Rich made a motion to close the public hearing. Jason seconded it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
So I have, I have one more question related to the flammability issue. So should something happen? Are we talking explosion or are we talking flame? Because we have a couple of structures that are pretty close to the site.
And so, other than our structures, everything is approximately 1,000 feet or greater.
Yep.
And, yeah, that would be, you know, multitudes of being sufficient for that, for any type of emergency like that.
Okay. Thank you. I've got one more, Mr. Chair. Then, as far as process, there'll be no on-site storage. The trucks will just come and, and apply directly into the line, correct?
Correct. There will be zero on-site storage of natural gas. There is a potential for small diesel storage for, for the tractor, but that's no more than you'd see on a farm or anywhere else.
Well, let's move on to the findings of facts, then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, the proposal is, in, is consistent with the land and zoning ordinance 439, Sections 4.8, 6.18, and 9.3.5.
Thank you, Rich. Does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county? Please list applicable sections.
Mr. Chair, I would like to take a shot at this. There's multiples that I think it applies to, but I'm just gonna go with the easiest. Number one, increase the county's regional prosperity by being globally competitive and business-friendly region. This is a cool business. It's a really well-thought-out site. I like it. I'm kind of excited for you guys.
I agree.
Mr. Chair, if I could add to that, we haven't really talked about it during this discussion, but I think it is directly tied to our ag use policies. The applicants didn't mention it, but the primary land use in the county should be ag-oriented, and these folks are harvesting a natural off-gas product of manure, which is a concern for multiple purposes. So it does tie into that, and it links to the importance of animal ag in the county economy by treating it as a primary land use, because again, you're using the manure gas, which is an unutilized resource. So I think it multiple ties into that.
Certainly. Thank you. How is the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, the conditions that will probably be applied to the approval process will satisfy the ordinance requirements.
Thank you, Jason. Now, are there other issues pertinent to this matter? Township or city input, federal, state, or local permits? Are any environmental concerns that we haven't addressed?
I think we're good there. Mr. Chair, just one thing. I think we might have missed three, which is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood.
I'm sorry.
Which is fine, it was kind of at the bottom. But in this case, it is. This is, this is kind of right on the transition of Richmond. There's some other sheds. This is not going to be an overbearing site by new.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, one thing for the applicants to consider, under the conditional use permit, there's four employees limited to the site. Hopefully, you'll get bigger.
Yeah.
So keep that in mind, that as you grow, be aware you do have this limitation to your site, so we need to work on that in the future. I mean, I'd love to see 16, 20 folks out there running around the county.
If I could, our thought in setting this up is that if or as needed, we could potentially rezone to commercial.
Okay. Thank you.
We, too, would like to get to that 23. They're gonna be out in the field building these things, not at this site.
Yeah. Yeah. Good.
All right. I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, Jason, I will make a motion with the five recommendations, recommended conditions. I'm sorry, six, yes. There's access as well, which they said they're gonna be working with highway department from the county. So with those six recommended conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll second that. And Rich seconded it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? None. Motion carries.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number five is some corrections.
It's, it's kind of going off of our campsite discussions, right? Oh, we have minutes first?
We have the other thing first. The ordinance update discussion.
Help me. What? Talk to me.
Over some ordinance changes, Angie's going to.
Favorite.
Just for this. I...
Glad you could be here.
I have a hard time keeping my mouth shut when I'm somewhere, so. Okay, for a lot of you, I think all of you were probably at the meeting a couple meetings ago, where we, Jennifer and I had floated this idea of recreational camping to you all, and you said, you kind of gave us a really good direction, what to do, so we did that. And then we did a whole lot of other things, but all the other things that we did are minor. And so what I did on the spreadsheet, and I'm happy to go through it row by row if you'd like, but what I did is I have definition modification and interpretation update in the first two columns. Honestly, nothing there is a big deal, but if you have any questions on what is in those first two columns, my proposal, Mr. Chair, would be you call those out. Otherwise, I would recommend that we skip to talking about the recreational camping areas, because that's the new use that would be created. So thoughts on how you want to go about that?
I would take a shot. Just general feedback. I looked through it, and it actually, I think did a nice job of kind of laying out the differences and trying to be forward-thinking in the way these, these campsites, kind of what prompted this was, you know, how do we define camping, and what people charge for camping, and what's, what's acceptable. I think the language helps us to at least get out ahead of potential land use conflicts, which is what we could run into if people start renting out, you know, a farm field for, for people to tent on. So I actually didn't really see anything I would have changed that jumped out at me. My two cents.
Anyone else got some change?
I'm not sure what packet page it is of yours, but it's the one that's on the screen. It's on the bottom. It's the little 6-56. That would be what the new performance standards would be for the recreational camping area limited. That would be where you have to have at least 10 acres be zoned either from A160 down to R5. And then the next section would be for construction, for temporary construction projects, big projects.
I like how it even lists how far that structure should be separated. I mean, having, having all those things kind of laid out, I don't know where it all came from, but it creates a really good starting point. And if for some reason we see a bunch of applications, or, well, we run into issues as a result of it, it can always get changed, but it, I liked it. There's others kind of reviewing this. Quick question on next steps. Would this then go to the county commissioners to basically review one last time and adopt or modify?
Mr. Chair, member Crone, the board set a public hearing for April 30th.
Oh, good. Okay.
Yes.
So just a question on the 1,000 square feet. Is that 1,000 square feet as one block? Or could it be like, oh, we've got 30 square feet here that we're putting the camper, and 930 square feet over in the bush? So is, does that need to be clarified, or?
So, Mr. Chair, member Wienerman, that came from, the answer to your question is it has to be contiguous.
Okay.
And it came from, kind of with Jason, you said where, where did we derive some of these things? It's from our special event camping rules, ordinance thing, that our environmental health team works with. So they recommended the 1,000. And obviously, if you have 10 acres, you're gonna have plenty of 1,000s, right? It's, and you can only have four, but they just put that in there just so there's kind of some like box, right? That's designated, so. So other than the camping, or do you, does anyone else have any questions on the camping? I know there was some like, not sure if you wanted to allow it all the way down to R5. That is what's proposed in front of you right now, so from A160 down to R5, but you have to have 10 acres.
I just, I have one question. I just, I would care, like, what are the limits to this? I didn't read the whole thing, because honestly, I didn't get through that part of the packet, but, like, if I wanted to have a bunch of people over for a weekend and go camping, is that gonna limit that? Or is that, or is this just limiting for like, the summer, I want to have a whole bunch of people camping at my house? Like, what's the limit here?
Sure. So if, if you, at your place, you want to have friends over for the Fourth of July weekend, go for it. This isn't, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about if you're advertising, and you're charging, and you're...
Business out of it.
Yeah, but... Say it here, rent my space, right? Like parking spaces are...
Vierbeau for camping.
Game.
But specifically, it could be all summer.
Right.
So that is, that is the proposal. There's no limit on number of days, or months, or anything. So if that's a concern, then we would have to talk about that.
Chair, Angie, where's the, where does it dress sanitation? Between toilets and showers?
I think it is. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, so we just say number C, a water and sewer management plant should be submitted, and really what that's gonna look like is someone's gonna bring their own water, and then the property owner's gonna either have a porta potty, or they're going, the camper, if they're bringing a camper, is going to have a self-contained unit.
I, oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's, yeah, if it's camper, they'd be self-contained units, but what about tenting? Are... Yeah, that's, yeah, if it's camper, they'd be self-contained units, but what about tenting? Are we gonna, are we gonna permit for, let's say there's no sanitation there and they want to use self-contained, then they could, they could do the trailers, but what happens? We would not allow the tenting then? Would that be specific to the CUP or IUP?
So, the proposal is, this is provisional, because I don't think you want all of these coming in front of you. As far as tenting, a lot of you are probably tented at a state park, right? So, they have electricity and they have, they have nothing else, most of them. So, it'd be like that. You bring your tent and you just, you wash your hands under a little spigot thing you bring with, like, you know, we have a blue thing that you open it up, wash your hands, and then you go to the shower house, take your shower, or you walk to the bathroom, you know, you walk, in this case, to the porta potty. They're not required to have a septic system or well. If we did that, we might as well not even change the ordinance, because nobody's going to invest that into their property. So, obviously, if there's concerns and there's mistreatment of waste, that's not okay.
There are regulations against that.
Right. Does that help you out?
Yes and no. I guess, for example, you know, where's the gray water gonna go that they're gonna have? Can people just wash their dishes and dump it on the ground?
Right. And that's actually allowed under our current statewide sewer rules.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, oh, go ahead. Because it's not originating in a structure and then coming out of a structure. It's, you're just washing your hands out in a bucket.
Yeah.
Kind of thing.
So, there's not gonna be anything like, like, holding stations or draining stations for RVs and stuff?
No, not required.
But would it also be against regulations then?
No, it could be permitted under our sewage rules. I know that the six or 10 that we have out there currently operating without this, they don't have any sort of infrastructure. They have electricity in some cases, but nobody has a tank or dump, that's what I was looking for.
At some point, you hit campground or resort status, depending on, and when you start to take it to that level. So, this is really just addressing that area that falls underneath that.
Sure.
In which case, there are sewage laws in place and things, you can't just defecate all over.
So, will you require a porta potty or a pit toilet?
We, we would, unless their plan to us would say that they're only going to permit RVs, right? Because then they have their self-contained unit. So, that's why we kept the language very vague. Just tell us, tell us what you're going to do, and then we're gonna make sure you have a plan that meets the requirements. I got a thumbs up. Is there any thumbs down, neutral, kind of feeling okay about it? Okay?
I think we're probably all okay with it, aren't we? Do you have to vote on it?
Um, no, Mr., well, actually, yes, please, if you could provide a formal recommendation. I just want, I just don't want to be criticized for jumping past anything else that anybody had questions with, so is there any other...
I'm gonna motion.
So, question number I. A letter I, all sites shall have direct access to an internal circulation roadway. So, does that mean there needs to be a loop on the campground? It can't be an in-and-out? Is that what I'm reading there?
Okay, yes, so that one's for the construction camping situation, so in theory, you could have a lot more of those, you could have 100 maybe. So, right, the idea is that they actually have to have a road that comes in and services these...
Right.
Potentially many RVs for a construction project.
Just having a set in-and-out.
Right.
You don't want, you don't want Williston.
Right. Okay. Yeah, and that's a good question. That also came from the, the special event camping provision, so...
Rich, you can go ahead, otherwise, rock and roll. You look, you're excited for it. Absolutely. Stoic, well-spoken.
Joe's got an impression.
Are we gonna require a log of campers?
We wouldn't have any reason to, because we're not limiting the, the number of days per year or people per year or anything like that.
And there's no kind of liability that would be associated with somebody like Airbnb rental, where we do want logs?
Well, I mean, and for the short-term rentals, I think part of it we did so we could keep track of the septic system, the number of people coming in and out and how many it was, and, and honestly, even for that provision, the ordinance says it's, it's, needs to be available upon request, and I think we've only requested it one time, and that one time, the planning commission ended up revoking that person's permit. So, we could, we could put it in there. I'm not going to ask for it unless there's a problem, and then at that point, I'm not sure what that would really do for us, having a list of who was there. You know what I mean?
Joe, you get to talk about this again anyway.
All right. Okay, I would like to make my motion. Okay. I make a motion that we approve this for review by the county board of commissioners.
Rich has made a motion.
I'll second that.
And it is seconded by Dave. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And then I just have one quick last thing. Richard, thanks for attending the county board meeting, and I am really bad at informing the planning commission what the county board does now that Jeff Bertram is on the county board, because he was the one that always would ride me to get those emails out. So, feel free to ask me if I, if I don't. But what the board did for that freely interim use permit request, they did deny the extension. So, they will be operating under the 25 years or 26 years that was originally granted. So, just to circle back on that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, now we have minutes to approve.
Mr. Chair, I was just curious, past practice, I was not here, do we officially abstain or... Okay.
Rich, make a motion to pass our minutes from last month, February.
I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I like that.
Now we have this...
I did abstain.
Me too.
If that needs to be public, I don't know.
We got you, Dave.
What else we got? Where are we at?
Just one, one thing. We will be having somebody from IT here to talk about getting iPads for all the board of, our board planning commission members and board of adjustment members, and changing to county email addresses. So, I'm trying to push them to get that done sooner rather than later, so it can expect that in the next, one of the next couple of meetings, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okeydoke.
Anything else?
That'll come with all kinds of great, like, dual login and more passwords. I can't wait.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.[1645.88]